For a moment of silence and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And Mr. Hicks?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Hicks?
Yes, sir.
Just as a brief housekeeping on approving the agenda for tonight, did we also approve the agenda for the public hearing? I'm not sure we did that, and that way we'll have that taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Take care of that first.
All right, we'll take care of that first.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the budget meeting?
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed?
We have an agenda for tonight's meeting.
We have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda for tonight's meeting? The agenda for tonight's meeting?
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to recommend that CTE policy drug policy, be modified to discussion of the DCPS drug policy for tonight's meeting, please.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the revision to the agenda?
Second.
Motion in second, is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor of the approving of the revision for the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That will bring us to our public comment section. Mr. Hackney, would you please read the guidelines for public comment? And Ms. Martin, will you please bear timekeeper?
A period of time for public comment will be designated on the meeting agenda during which the public may comment on issues related to public education. Dickinson County School Board believes that the citizens of the county should be heard and that this is an acceptable format for receiving public comment. After the public comment section of the meeting is closed, the public shall not be allowed to participate in general board member discussions regarding agenda items. Public participation with the board members regarding agenda items can be disruptive and the practice is prohibited by Robert's Rules of Order. It is the desire of the school board to treat each member of the public fairly and equally. Allowing one individual to participate while excluding others is unfair. The board may hold such public hearings as may be necessary to allow the public to more fully express their concerns, or the board may place the public comment section of any meeting at the end of the meeting to allow additional public comment. While we do not wish to restrict the free expression of opinion, we feel that certain restrictions may be necessary so that order and reasonable standards of decorum may be maintained. We ask that the following standards be adhered. The speaker will be recognized by the chair. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will refrain from the use of vulgarity or profanity, and will avoid negative or embarrassing comments directed towards specific children or students. Board members should not respond to issues presented by speakers unless clarification is necessary. Matters of concern raised under public comment will be referred to the proper official for investigation and future board consideration if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hackney. Would like to recognize Mr. Steve Short. Evening, Mr. Short.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Baker, and Mr. Mullins. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Deal and Ms. Robinson for allowing me, as a VPE representative, to attend the new teacher orientation back in the first of August. No doubt the excitement is in the air because we have all kinds of events getting ready to take off, and I know how that goes. Just wanted to mention that. I've put it in front of you, this little leaflet, and I have it there just for your reading. It explains who we are and what we represent. Our membership fees are only $15 a month, and membership includes not just teachers, it can be administrators, it can be bus drivers, it can be custodial staff, it can be substitute teachers. Those that are considered part-time get half-price, and even student teachers that come on, it's like $25 for them. I just wanted to mention that. But finally, I wanted to mention, well, not finally, I do want to mention one other thing. Our organization is considered an apolitical group by saying that, meaning that we choose not to endorse a political party, a political candidate. Our whole purpose is to try to do what's best in education for the teachers, administrators in our area. So we do have lobbyists in Richmond, we do have lobbyists in Washington that are there regularly on a weekly, almost daily basis, fighting for education in our area. Having mentioned that, we, VPE, offer grants and scholarships. I know Dickinson County has had some recipients of those scholarships and grants. They're offered to teachers for classroom situations. They're also offered to teachers for recertification-type things. If they take a class, then they can send in an application, and they can do that online for those people who are interested in getting a little extra money. I think it's up to $500. Just want to make you aware of that. That way, if there are any teachers who might be interested in that, and we all would like to have a little extra money anytime we get it. So I just wanted to make you aware of those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Would like to recognize Phyllis Mullins. Ms. Mullins?
I'm Phyllis Mullins, President of the Dickinson Education Association, and we are back up and running for the new year. I was at new teacher orientation, enjoyed meeting a lot of the new teachers and talking to them and things. It's great to see the excitement on those new faces in there. We are very involved in everything education-wide, from the national level down to the local level, and we have to stand up for public education. That's what we do. We stand, shout out how great public education is, and we try to do everything we can to enhance the lives of our teachers. Do offer many grants to our members, and we talking with the UNISERV director in a TOPS grant that I usually write, and that can use to do little things through the year. So I was thrilled to get the T-shirts, everybody was. We had a really special, and we enjoyed the united feeling that we had. So I want to thank Mrs. Robinson and everybody for those on behalf of the DEA, and yours wishing for a great year. It's off to a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins. Have anyone else who would like to make public comment?
Okay, my name is Vicki Standifer. I am a concerned grandparent and citizen of Dixon County. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, I appreciate that. We have some concerns. I'm a mother and a grandmother, and we're concerned about what's going on in the school. As any parent, my children and grandchildren mean everything to me. They're the most important thing in my life, and I'm sure that most of you feel that way also. Unfortunately, it seems that the bullying in the schools has been allowed to flourish in the county schools. It's long past time for some action. We're trying to bring awareness to how serious it is. As most of you are well aware, verbal and mental bullying can be as bad, if not more serious, than physical bullying, even to the extent of self-harm to the bullied and even suicide. Students are telling other students they are no good, you should go home and kill yourself, and sadly, some have. One student last year did the day before school started. And Ms. Robinson told me last week in a meeting that these children had other issues that could have caused that suicide. I disagree from what I have read from many, many parents and friends of these students, the mental anguish these children must have gone through. If Ms. Robinson is correct, making the school a safer place, a place where mental anguish, a change in behavior, or someone being bullied would have been noticed or reported and action taken, it could have saved a life, a precious young life. I know children who were bullied for years and nothing was done, bullied by other students, bullied by student athletes, and from sadly, some of the teachers. I've heard story after story. They were ignored for years. Someone should have seen this. Your student-to, teacher-to-student ratio is 11 to 1. Someone should have seen this. Could one, just one, of you have saved a child's life by saying something? One teacher was told by a student, "I'm suicidal," that teacher sent her back to class, and she killed herself that night. Could that teacher have saved that child's life? It's common knowledge bullying goes on and cases are reported by parents. Parents who wait for response to their concerns, they get no call back, no action is taken or minimal action is taken. If a student tries to defend themselves, they get in trouble. If a student, they get in as much trouble as the bully. If they try to defend another student, they get in trouble. Is it because of who the bully is? For years, even when I went to school, athletes got by with murder, and it's still that way. I don't know why that they should be above anyone else, just because they can throw a ball or hit a ball. And I have a couple of things here. The mission statement of the Dixon County Public School is to provide a safe and nurturing environment for learning. I think it is failing. Now, my daughter is a teacher in another state. I don't, I have respect for teachers, teachers that do their job, that watch students, teachers that help students that are having problems. So I'm not anti-teacher, anti-coach, anything. There are some wonderful teachers and coaches out there. Some of them, though, however, are not doing their job. They're looking the other way, they're lacing with the bullies. Okay? Bullying by the Virginia Department of Education is any aggressive or unwanted behavior that is intended to harm, intimidate, or humiliate the victim. Aggressors, real or, it involves real or perceived power imbalance between the aggressor and the victim, and is repeated over time or causes severe emotional trauma. Now, you all know all this, it's on your website. So your website, bullying was not working at the beginning of the year. Report the bullying wasn't even working, so somebody couldn't go on and report bullying. I have a lot of stories from parents and friends that cannot, cannot be wrong. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Ms. Robinson, I promise I'm in better mood today. I was the angriest I've ever been in my life when I ran into you the other day, and when I spoke to the nice lady at the school, I apologize, I didn't cuss, but I was angry. I want to talk to you, I want to tell you a story about a kid. This little boy is born. Oh, boy, was I going to live that life I wanted through him? He was different. He wasn't interested in sports, anything. Four years old, he could read anything you put in front of him. He'd lay in my lap and read my books to me. Very intelligent. Put him in this room, he's in the top three, I guarantee it, top three. Elementary school went good, no big problems. Then to middle school, and he picked up two little buddies. These two little buddies traveled with him to this year. But anyway, name-calling, belittling, poking him because he didn't like to be touched to get the reaction of him crying. That was a hoot. This is middle school, guys. This is middle school. Did he deserve this in school? I don't think so. One high school, hey, they came right along with him, picked up two wingmen. Long away in high school, these two guys did, picked them up too to help them. They didn't hang around them. Maybe they had a conscience. The others did. Guys, young man sitting in a class, he's hit in the back of the head with a racer while people were watching. A young lady finally, a student, says, "Leave him alone." Did anybody report it to the teacher? Did the teacher report it? No. I didn't know about that day. I assure you, the people that did it would have left you in handcuffs, sure I would. This is my grandson, people. He deserved this in high school. You tell me that, because he different. From the first semester of middle school, from the end of it on, he sat alone at lunch every day in the cafeteria in this place. And the entire time, not one adult, staff member, not one principal, teacher, cook, janitor, none of you walked up and said, "Young man, you okay?" No children did either. Why? Why should they? They learn from example. This goad every day with him, up until now. No compassion was showed him. No, "Son, are you okay?" Nobody spoke, not even the resource officers, the police, who claimed, "Hey, I go to every kid that sits alone." Nobody went to him. No, nobody. And to, I asked him, I said, "What's, what's your deal with Ridgeview?" He said, "Disappointed, expected more, expected actual consequences for those doing wrong, expected environment where I wouldn't have to worry about going to the bathroom due to other students using vapes and drugs, and an environment where the teachers actually cared." That's what my, oh, he's not here, he's doing the learning you did during COVID, what virtual, I think it's called. And this year, first day, first class was fine, but people started laughing and pointing at me in the second, and I got upset because of it. In my next class, people kept poking me even after I said to stop. I was crying, and nobody even asked if I was okay. To hell with all of you!
Have anyone else for a public comment?
I'm Connie Fuller, most of y'all know me. This is my son Terry, y'all know him well, too. I took my son out of school. Weird, why the bullying?
Ms. Buller, if you could speak a little bit closer to the microphone, thank you.
I took my son out of school a couple years ago. Why the bullying? I come to y'all a while back because of it. Anything happen? No. So we got tired, I put him out of school, let everyone know. Did it continue? Nothing was never said, just swept under the rug like nothing ever happened. It got worse, kept getting worse, kept getting worse. You all, I know it's not going to stop, it's going to continue to get worse until something happens. My son tried to commit suicide three times. I told you all this, three times. Now my son's in counseling because of it. He's in therapy. And you all do what? Sweeping under the rug? Children are doing it daily, doing it daily. They're on their cellphones texting children, like it was said earlier. Kids go to school daily. What do they get? Go home. Told to kill themselves because they're not worthy. Is it going to take a child to literally kill themselves in front of you all? Literally kill themselves in front of you all to get the point across? Is that what it's going to take? Because the pit is, you all are a poor excuse for a school. Are we going to have to take our children out of public school and teach them at home? Because if it does, buddy, you all sure going to lose a lot of money. It seems like that's all you all care about. You all don't care for our children. It's money. And I'm telling you what, a lot of families are literally taking their children out of school for it, and I praise them for it. So it's on you all's heads until something is done in school. Like they said, teachers, you know, hey, until you all, teachers, staff, all of y'all do something with the bullying, it's going to keep on. I know it's not going to stop, but you all can stop it to a point. Come on, you all, you all have family, you all have children, you all have grandchildren. I know most of you are. How would you all feel if it was your child, your grandchild coming and telling you all this? How would you all feel if it was your child, your grandchild trying to kill themselves? Is that what it's going to take? If not, do something about it. Until then, I hope and pray that this county gets it together, or these children are going to keep dropping. And if not, I hope and pray you all, parents, parents, do things and take our kids out of this poor excuse of a damn school.
Anyone else like to make public comment?
My name's Travis Mullins. I have a daughter who started sixth grade up here this year. From the first day, the eighth of August, she come home being bullied by a little girl who plays softball, being told she was fat, a loser, busting out of her clothes, and that she was going to beat her ass in silence. We told, I'm sorry. We told the principal the next day. She refused to go into school. We tried to have the resource officer help. I wasn't with my wife that morning. It was the following day, the ninth, and it really messed with her mental health, her self-confidence. It's hard to see a child struggle like that. We trust our children to the teachers, and they just let it go. All they did was move Keely's glasses and her lunch, but they didn't move her lunch or glasses. And she was sitting directly in front of the girl at lunch, and she was mouthing stuff to her at lunch, and repeated, repeated reports, nothing was done. We have Keely up here to school every morning on time, my wife does, and we have a son in the elementary and a daughter in the high school. They're here on time. She just refuses to go. We tried to physically make her, and nothing, I mean, other than changing the classes, nothing was done. So the other day, I think it was last Tuesday, maybe Wednesday, we talked her into going to school. She went to school, the little girl kept bullying her, and Keely's been taught to stand up for herself, and she hit the little girl after lunch. And I reckon, according to my daughter, the resource officer grabbed her pretty aggressively and accused her of sucker punching the little girl. My little girl got three days OSS. The other little girl got nothing, and she's still refusing to go to school. We can't get her to school. We're worried to death about getting in trouble with the social services, and it's just something needs to be done. I've contacted the congressman about this, emailed him, his assistant emailed me back. We've been in communication. And our tax dollars should go to, you know, the education that you guys get from our tax dollars, you know, should give our kids a safe environment to go to school and have friends and be normal and be social and not have to be homeschooled and isolated. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins. Anyone else like to make public comment? Anyone else? Well, our next agenda item is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes which includes the approval of minutes, approval of monthly invoices, revenue and expenditure summary, discussion of school activity funds, approval of field trips, approval of new elementary school construction invoices, the approval of construction bank reconciliation document in Dixon County Public Schools Health Statement Account. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Here ignore the discussion, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Remove.
Here a second. Motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Our next agenda item is information for the school board, Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, and good evening, board members. Under information for the board are just four current or scheduled conferences for board members.
Oh, Ms. Robinson, I'm sorry. I had something on my, if you don't mind me letting-
No, that's fine, sir.
-letting me interrupt you for a moment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, we've heard from, from several families here tonight-
Yes, sir.
-and several instances and those kind of things. Just wanted to ask, you all had time to investigate any of these things, administration? Just, you know, can you, can you speak of that? How maybe we've looked into these?
Yes, sir, we, we have. I have met with Mrs. Standifer and the father with Mr. Mullins and our compliance director, Mrs. Martin. The student did not come to school or did not come to the meeting. We would like to have an opportunity to meet with the student and to investigate. As a school of a division, we investigate all bullying reports. We investigate that issue very seriously. Our administrators, our teachers are very actively involved. Our SROs are also involved, if necessary, in those investigations. As of today, we have not had an opportunity to meet with the young man, but hope to do so.
I know that, uh, this made me think of a, there was a, I can't remember his name, but anyway, it was the, a Supreme Court justice once said that, that sunlight is the best disinfectant. And I'd just like to say that I appreciate you all coming tonight and shining some light. Uh, you know, the more light we get on any of these things, the better off we will be to end those things. This, you know, any bullying is not just a, uh, it's not just school board, it's not just administration, it's not just teachers, it's not just fellow students, it's all of us, parents, grandparents, friends. So if all of us will shed some light on that-
Yes, sir.
-you know, and, and call it out when it needs to be. And hopefully we can put an end to this and really make a better educational experience for our schools. I noticed, uh, just on the calendar the other day that October is bullying prevention month.
Yes, sir, it is.
And, you know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I would assume that they're going to agree with me. But I'd like to ask for us, if you make it your top priority along with other administrators-
Yes, sir.
-and even our teachers, that we make a real concerted effort to make this anti-bullying month, to get that to all of our students, to get those lessons out there. Let them know, hey, it's all right to speak up and say something and to call something out when, if somebody else is doing something, you know? And if we all shed light on it, then we can make, make a, uh, you know, a good run at getting it stopped. You know, I know that the, to, to reach the, the level that Virginia and the laws have put out there, to meet the definition of bullying is hard to get to. But we just don't want to stop bullying. We won't stop being ugly. We won't stop just picking and all that kind of stuff and just, you know? Uh, we want to treat each other well. And I, I hope that that's an effort that we can put forth, beginning here tomorrow, and make a real concerted push through it for that anti-bullying month in October and continue to do that.
Yes, sir, we certainly will do that. Uh, Mr. Hicks, I also publicly would like to, again, invite the family to bring the student in and let him meet with Mrs. Martin. I know that Mrs. Martin takes a very active role in those types of investigations. If we have that opportunity to talk with him, Mrs. Martin does an excellent job of getting the students' information and then going into the school and talking with the students that were reported bullying. We need the information, sir. We can't go in, we, we can't go in blind. We can't accuse students without facts. And so if we would just have that opportunity, and again, I make that publicly, add that if Tanner- Again, I'd just like to say that we will welcome the student to come and meet privately with Ms. uh- So, um, but again, I think that's an excellent, um, for October month. And again, we will gladly meet with this particular student. I know Ms. Martin has made herself available at any time. And so, thank you, sir.
Well, yes, ma'am, appreciate it. Let's make that a very concerted effort to take care of those things. So sorry, before I interrupt you, it was, uh, information for the school board.
Okay.
Sorry, board members, I appreciate y'all endorsing me in that.
Mr. Hicks and board members, information for the board, there are four current upcoming conferences there. And I'd like for you to look at the last two, the 2024 BSBA Annual Convention. That's an excellent convention for board members to attend. If you're interested in attending that and travel to Williamsburg, please contact Ms. Baker, and she'll be glad to arrange hotel reservations and those types of things. Also, I'd like to call your attention to October the 23rd, the Legislative Listening Session. This is also a, a conference that I strongly recommend. This is where Region Seven School Board Members, Superintendents gather with a legislative group from southwest Virginia. And we have an opportunity to present our concerns, issues that Region Seven is facing, and then also a question and answer period. That one will be held at the Higher Ed Center in Abington. And again, if you'd like to join that, please let Ms. Edwards, I'm sorry, Ms. Baker know, and she will also be glad. There's a meal and so on that way. But that's a fascinating and a very interesting legislative session. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Next agenda item is good news from our school. Ms. Robinson, will you share a good news with our school?
Oh, yes, thank you, sir. I think, is that PowerPoint ready? I like to, you know, sometimes picture tells, says a thousand words. And so, Mr. Wallace, if, if you could, please, this is some of snapshots of the first day of school. And so if we could have that PowerPoint, I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you. It's a slideshow, excuse me. These are our staff members with t-shirts that were provided. And we asked them to take a lot of pictures of students and staff and the first day of school so that you could, we could all remember this day. See pictures of our school resource officers. They were incredible that day, the way that they assisted us. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Of course, on the back of the shirt, it said Ridgeview 8-8-24, united, together we achieve greatness. And so that was quite a day, and I wanted to share that with you. But following that, I just would like to publicly and sincerely thank all of our staff and faculty, our DCPS families, you, our school board members, our community boards, and our stakeholders for their work and diligence in contributing to an excellent beginning of school. I don't know that I have understood or really accepted or processed this, but on that particular day, on the Ridgeview campus, we had over 1,800 students. We had 312 full-time staff. We had over 60 to 65 part-time staff. We had 40 school buses that came and picked up students and dropped students off. And on that particular day, I can honestly say that I think we had most of Dixon County here who have children bringing and dropping off their children. And so, on that particular day, it was a beautiful day that day, and our staff wore the shirts. All of our staff members wore the shirts. We were easily, we were easily identified, and it was just a good day. So I just, again, want to thank each of you. I want to thank everyone who had a part in making this day a reality, and also just, just for their help, our SROs, everyone, everyone who contributed to this day. And so I just felt, Mr. Hicks, thank you, that I needed to say that publicly because it was quite, it was quite an adventure, sir. And so we were glad to be a part of that. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Martin if she'll come and talk about the 10-day enrollment. The 10-day enrollment was last Wednesday, and she would like to report just on how our student enrollment for the 24-25 school year.
Good afternoon, board members. The, um, the enrollment data that I've shared with you is based on 10 days. I normally give you the end of the month. And so next month, I will be able to give you a more accurate picture of what the month of August looks like. We ended the, the school year May 30th last year with 1,859 students. That was in K-12, that was 1,767 students. The three-year-old program had 18 students, and our pre-K and postgraduate was 74. So that's a total of 1,859. For our 10-day report, and I've enclosed that, I actually finished that out on Friday, which was actually 12 days instead of 10. I did give you a copy of the 10-day, but just to, just to finish out the week, those numbers for, for K through 12, we have 1,737. For our three-year-old program, which is a special ed program, we have seven students. And for our pre-K postgraduate, we have 79 students, for a total of 1,823. At the end of, for next month, I'll be able to give you a more accurate look on where our withdrawals and entries are, where those were, where the, where the students went to, whether they went out of state to different local schools, homeschool, virtual, that sort of thing. These numbers do include any students that have gone to virtual. But again, um, this is a 10-day report that we, we do at the beginning of each school year. So the numbers are, can be a little misleading. We do have four no-shows at the end of this report. Two of those are 18-year-olds that have told us they're not returning. By code, we have to wait 15 days to, to drop those students. And two were pre-K students that have decided not to, not to enter the pre-K program. So again, we'll wait and 15 days and, and drop them as well. So we are aware of where those students are. My attendance clerks did a real good job of, of locating any students that had, did not show up so that we knew where they were. And some, we have a couple that are starting school on the other side of the state, and we're waiting, of course, for their school to start to get their transfer information. But we, we are aware of where they're going.
Ms. Martin, can you go through just the enrollment, student enrollment by school at this time, please? I think you have that information.
I can. And that, that would be the one handout. This lighting is horrible. At Ridgeview Elementary School, we have 600 students in K through 12, 63 students if you count pre-K and the seven-year-old program, which is for a total of 663 students. At Ridgeview Middle School, we have 584 students. And at Ridgeview High School, we have 553 students in, in 9 through 12, and 23 in the postgraduate program, for a total of 576 students. Any questions on, on the enrollment so far?
Any questions, Ms. Martin?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. All right, next agenda item is the update on Ridgeview Elementary School, Mr. Burge. Welcome, Mr. Burge.
Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. Well, the construction, we were able to complete the school in time for school to open. Got all the substantial completion, the certificate occupancy. All the classrooms completed. Sidewalks around the building have been completed. We are now working on a few punchless items, and things came in late. They'll be being installed in the next couple of weeks. Then, uh, so it's been a pretty good month. A little busy, but was able to get everyone into school. Building, uh, is still on budget. And like I said, punch work is still going on. I have a few photos of the school there on the screen. Here's one of the classrooms all set up, ready for students to come. Corridor, new extension, the, the bathroom entrances. Couple pictures of boys' bathroom. Stairwell there on the end of the building, nice view from there to the outside, all the sports facilities. Another classroom ready for, ready for school. Pull out space here. Here's the extension from the building out to the tennis court. For the people to be able to park in the new parking lot and be able to go out to the tennis court sidewalks along the back of the school or the end of the school there and along the front of the school. So like I said, next couple of weeks, we should be working on the parking lot. And then within a month or so, we should be starting canopies for the middle school and high school. Things have gone well. Glad that everything was done and on time for school to start. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burge, will you be back?
I'll be back till we get through all the, all the canopies and the, uh, canopies in the parking lot. So I'll be back in another couple of months. Thank you.
Have we got anything from the DEQ permit yet?
We have the DEQ permit. All, everything has been completed. We hit, our last piece of it was our E N S plan from the county. That was submitted, and the fees were paid this week. So as soon as McFaul can get here- So, as soon as McFaul can get here, he's already ordered the structures for the little ponds that go out, those little sediment ponds that go out there. So, I'm expecting him to start within about two weeks from now.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Burge.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is the approval of the FY25 DCPS budget. Mr. Edwards. Welcome back.
The total proposed budget is $35,134,581. As I said in the meeting prior, it's about a 1.5% reduction from the budget that was adopted in March, and the expenditures have been adjusted likewise. Is there any questions from anybody on the budget or anything I can provide you?
Any questions for Ms. Edwards? All right, thank you, Ms. Edwards. Do we have a motion to approve the FY25 budget as presented? Got motion, Mr. Mullins? Yes, thanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, here, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is certification of the 2425 DCPS crisis plans. Mrs. Martin.
Hello, once again, board members. This summer, our principals, working alongside county emergency management personnel, as well as myself, developed and revised each school's crisis emergency management, medical emergency response plans. Recently, we emailed those revised copies to each of you. Hopefully, you had a chance to peruse that wonderful reading, and quite intense. The DCJS did change the template, and it's a little bit more detailed. So, it was a bit more of an undertaking this summer to do those. I did meet last week with the emergency management. The step that I have to follow is, once we create the crisis plans, then I meet with the county administration, the county emergency folks, and then they certify it for me, and then I bring it to you to have certified. Then I have to send it to a new staff. I have to send it to the regional director, who is in Bristol now. I have to send it to him, and I received confirmation today that he approved it. And then, once you certify it, then I have to send it to DCJS and have them certify it. So, they've added some steps to the process. But I ask that, after you've reviewed it, if you have any questions or comments or anything that I can clarify for you in our crisis plans.
They changed it quite a bit, didn't they?
Yes, yeah, they added about three different steps to it this year.
Absolutely. Any questions for Ms. Martin?
And I would like to read the Code of Virginia. The Code of Virginia, which is 22.1/278-8, it says, "Each school board shall ensure that every school that it supervises shall develop a written school crisis emergency management and medical emergency response plan. Additionally, the local school division superintendent shall certify this review in writing to the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety no later than August 31st of each year." With that statement being said, I ask at this time for each board member, since you have no questions, that I would need you to certify that you approve our crisis plans.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next agenda item is the discussion of the DCPS CTE drug testing policy. Ms. Edwards.
Ms. Edwards, as you're coming up, I just asked, these are new microphones for us, so we're trying to get used to them, so if you could get close so that we can hear you, that would be great. Thank you.
That was never my problem, is being too quiet. The drug policy is before you again for discussion, for explanation, for explanation, and to answer any questions that you may have. I want to start by backing up a little bit and talking a little bit about simulated workplace. Some of you were involved in that discussion early on, and some of you were not. So, I wanted to explain simulated workplace and how this came about. Dickinson County Public Schools, as well as all of the school systems in Virginia, are required to provide high-quality work-based learning for all of our students. That not only includes our CTE students, but that includes all of our students. And there is an indicator in which we have to submit data based on the services that we're providing for our students. It is called C-C-R-I. The last couple of years, we've struggled with that particular indicator because in Dickinson County, we have so few employment opportunities, as well as opportunities for high-quality work-based learning. So, we came up with, we started exploring options. How can we do this in Dickinson County without asking our students to travel a long distance to other counties to be able to participate in those high-quality work-based learning opportunities? One of the disadvantages we have is where we're geographically located. In order for our students to travel to Tazewell County, Russell County, Wise County, we're looking at travel. Most of our families struggle to do that, and our kids struggle to do that because there's not an opportunity for transportation for those experiences. So, we started thinking outside of the box. How can we do this inside of Dickinson County Public Schools and still offer our students the exposure to high-quality work-based learning? And we decided, or we wrote a grant, and we received the grant. It started out as $50,000. We were able to secure support from the folks in West Virginia. They actually came to Dickinson County and started teaching us about simulated workplace. We went through about two years of support from those folks as we were trying to look at, well, simulated workplace work in Dickinson County, how can we do this? So, we've gone through a period, and we have some programs now that have turned their classes into simulated workplaces. And what that means is the students actually decide on a company name, they actually have protocols that they follow, and they decide on a product that they want to produce. The product can be a service. Not all of our programs are making things, hands-on things. It can be a service. So, they came up with their ideas, and we have some that are moving along very quickly with that particular activity. One that I will mention, and I hate to mention one because I'm going to leave somebody out, and that always makes people feel bad when you do that, but one that we're still trying to build is with carpentry. We tried to purchase a shed so that we could build buildings. The class wants to build outdoor buildings and sell them to the community. While that's a great project for the carpentry class as a whole, we didn't have a place to do that, so we had to try to build a shed. Well, we ran into an obstacle because we couldn't get anybody to deliver a shed to us in Dickinson County. We tried for six months to get a shed delivered, and we never could get a shed delivered. Finally, Devon said, "Okay, my student will build the shed." So, they're going to build the shed, and then eventually, they will move to building outdoor buildings. So, if you have a building need and you would like to put in an order, please do that with Mr. Edwards. That's just one example of some of the things that we're doing. But, you know, we have a catering business, we have cosmetology, we have welding, we have so many other classes that we're doing auto mechanics, that he's actually turned his shop into an actual business where he actually writes the work orders that... I'm sorry, I should have brought some water. And they actually complete all of the jobs that they're doing in that particular class. So, we have some really great things going on. Agriculture, we're growing plants, we have a brand-new greenhouse that we're getting ready to start, just so many good things. So, now that I hopefully have helped to understand simulated workplace, one of the things that I hear, I'm on the work, and we meet quarterly, one of the things that I hear quite often from our workforce board is companies say they want employees that will show up every day and be able to pass a drug test. I hear that from, I hear that from the region, and that is a part of the simulated workplace protocols that we adopt in Dickinson County. And so, thinking about, we are trying to produce work-ready students who are employable, and we've got an opportunity while we have them in school to educate them on the negative effects of drug abuse and usage, so that when they leave us, hopefully, all 67% that can, that are not planning to go to college, that can go out from our training programs and actually be employed as soon as they leave us, they would have a certificate saying that they have passed a drug test to show when they go in and do an interview. Plus, if we have a student who fails a drug test, we have an opportunity to educate them. And that's the whole purpose for this policy, is to provide the education and support that our students need. It's not punitive, it's not intended, we're not turning the results over to law enforcement, we're not turning the results over to the administration. It's intended to be support for the students. Just like what the high school athletic drug screening policy does, we use vector as a training opportunity for those students, and we provide them support. And as I told my teachers when I met with them at the beginning of the year, if we save one student and we allow them, we give them a positive support and can change their path, then it's well worth the time and the effort that's put into the drug policy. I wanted to go through the purposes of the drug policy and a couple of other things so that I can answer questions, if you have any. The purpose of the drug policy is to educate students on the serious physical, mental, and emotional harm caused by illegal drug use. Number two, to alert the students with possible substance abuse problems and their parent and guardian of the potential harms that drug use possesses for their physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Number three, to ensure that students adhere to the training programs that bar the intake of illegal drugs. D, to prevent injury, illness, and harm to students that may arise as a result of using illegal drugs. And to assure the safe operation of the simulated workplace program or the company that has been set up inside of the CTE program. One thing that I want to share with you is if, for example, I'll use the carpentry class because I've already used that as an example, if their project is to build their simulated workplace company, and they have a company name, if their company is building buildings, that's their simulated workplace project. It doesn't mean that he can still negate his responsibilities of teaching the competencies or the other things that are required in the class because he still has to do that. We're required to do that in Virginia. We have a list of competencies for each course that is taught, and we're still required to do that. So, the simulated workplace, the students actually meet, they have regular company meetings, they decide on what their project is, they decide on their company name, and then there's some other protocols that they follow. The drug policy itself is designed to be random, and it says quarterly. Now, we're hoping if this is something the board wants to do, that we can at least get one drug test in this semester because most of our classes are semester-long classes. We have very few that run year-long. Those have more opportunities, but you're going to select from all of the students that are enrolled in CTE, you're going to select 40% of those students and do drug testing. Now, the hope is that they're all, that they all are not positive, but they are all negative for drug use, and we can print a certificate, and they'll have that for their employment profile and their portfolio, so when they go for a job, they can say, "Hey, I participated in this in high school, and here I'm worthy of an opportunity to be employed with your If a student, and I wanted to go through those consequences just for a moment and talk a little bit about confidentiality, the consequences is the first offense. So, when we select 40% of our students from all that are enrolled in CTE classes, we select 40%, let's say we have 10 people, it's a very high test-positive group, which I hope we have zero. That's the ultimate goal, just like our athletes. I hope that we have very few. First offense is that the parent is notified in writing that the child tested positive, and then the child is asked to participate in counseling. We have counseling onsite for all of our students, so they could participate in the counseling onsite. They would continue their participation in simulated workplace projects just like normal. If we are, if we do a second random sampling, then we would have a second group. If that is a very unlucky student, and they're selected randomly two times in a row in that class, in a semester class, and they tested positive a second time, suspension from participation in the workplace activities for 14, and then four hours of substance abuse is provided to the students. So, for those 14 days, it doesn't mean the student has to be removed from their CTE class, they just may not be able to work on the building that they're building outside. They may have to do something inside. And then, I'm sure your thought is, well, if they're doing something different from all the other students in the class, doesn't everyone know that they're doing something different? They all have different jobs. So, just like in a company, you have a variety of jobs that you do. Not everybody's going to be outside nailing nails on the building. You have others that are going to be doing that, so you have an opportunity to do that confidentially with your students. And then, the last, number three, is if the child is selected three times randomly, then the third time, and we've been able to get anywhere with any of our instruction, our education, then they would not be able to participate in the simulated workplace project for the remainder of this school year, or if it is a semester class for the remainder of the class. So, those are the consequences that are in the plan. And to add extra layer of instruction for our students while we have them, because we don't want our students to leave high school, apply for a job, fail a drug test, and then not be able to get a job that they've trained three years in school for. We want them to be able to be successful in their employment, we want to support our community. That's one of the areas, largest areas of need in our community is workforce. I hear that everywhere. They want our students, they want to employ our students because we don't have an abundance of workforce, and we need to have students that can meet their entry requirements, which in many areas is. So, it is not intended to be punitive, it is not to be way punishment for the child, it is intended to provide instructional instruction and support in the negative effect of drug abuse and how it impacts employment. Confidentiality, that's something we talked about the last time we were together. The company that we use would report back to an individual, the test results. If there was a positive, then a letter would be drafted and sent to the parent, and then the... And then the administrator would meet with the parent, potentially again, talk about the situation and hopefully provide some support for the child. So that's the policy in a nutshell. And if I have any questions that you may have, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have. Again, this is just topic for discussion tonight. And then you all give me guidance on which direction Dickinson County wants to go.
Ms. Ed, I appreciate you coming and sharing again, once, once again on this subject. You know, I was reminded of some of the concerns that folks had, whether that be by drug testing just CTE students that maybe we're possibly labeling those students. Certainly a concern and of course you address the confidentiality part of it. Appreciate that. But I thought as I was going through there, if, if, you know, with one student and one class and we're all out there sort of working on the building, you know, it's kind of hard to be, you know, you can't have a student working in the classroom and doing books and those kind of things. So, you know, it's kind of that. And I also thought, you know, what with drug testing, one of the great advantages of drug testing is that, and I've heard a lot of old coaches and folks say this about, it gives students a way out. If they ever feel pressured, if they ever feel, you know, some peer pressure to experiment or take drugs or anything of that matter, then always say, hey, I've got this class. I can't do that. I might be tested. And so I think it's a great way for, that's a great advantage of testing, even though there's still some concerns about labeling our kids and do we lose CTE students because we're doing this because they don't want to participate in it. But I do appreciate you coming back and filling us in some more on it.
Yeah. I mean, if there are any other questions, I'm glad to answer. Just to add to what you said, Mr. Hicks, you know, I think we've been doing drug testing. Mrs. Robinson reminds me of a few school divisions that do drug testing for athletes. And since 2003, the drug testing is intended to support the athletes. And I don't know that it prevents athletes. I don't think it would prevent, in this particular case, anybody from taking a CTE class because they're still going to be getting the class. They just may not be able to work on the project. And as you said, just like in every class, they have to come with, in a company, roles and responsibilities. So they have different roles and responsibilities for, just like you do in a company. And if a child is, if we have gotten to two, which is highly and statistically very unlikely because you're only selecting 40% of the kids. But if we did have a student there, then I would think that our teachers, and I respect them enough to believe that they would be very confidential in making sure that that student had a role that still allowed them to progress in the class while not singling them out. Because that's not what this is intended. It's only intended to help, it's not intended to hinder or hurt any child.
Would you say that we could achieve every goal of the simulated workplace without drug, drug testing? Except for being able to put that certificate in at the end saying that, hey, I've, you know, been tested and not, and always been negative?
Following from West Virginia, drug testing is mandated in West Virginia. That is mandated as part of their simulated workplace opportunities. As far as creating a simulated workplace, it doesn't say that you have to do drug testing. It's one of those things that we're following the protocols from West Virginia and it is one of their protocols. Of course, as we know, that's an area of need, not only in our county and our region. We've been talking about this for about two years. And I know the county has been very supportive of this because there is a grave need in Dickinson County as well as in the region. So, you know, it's just an added layer of support. And it doesn't mean you do simulated place, we just won't be following all the protocols that are in place.
I, I feel like it's important, you know, preparing students for the workplace to make it as, as, as close to what they're going to see in the real world as possible. We're doing it at the colleges. That's the way we function in our, in our workforce department. They do that even before they're admitted into the program. So if, if our students have any plans of going on and pursuing some of these trades in college or going straight into the workplace, they're going to, they're going to see that very soon. So, you know, I, I feel like it's a, it's a good thing and I, I'm in support of it. I guess my question would be more in the way of, have we looked at the cost of the program of implementing that aspect?
Yes.
What does that look like?
One, what they shared with, they're doing in West Virginia is they're using Amazon. I think I shared that with you guys the last time. You can get almost anything on Amazon now and you can get the drug testing protocol. And that is something, I have talked to Mr. Barton, Larry Barton, in the past about support of that and he was very positive at that time. Now, I don't know where the county is at this point. There were, there was some drug money that came through that they would be able to use in relationship to this particular project. So again, I've not followed through with that other than having that initial conversation. So if the board decides to go this direction, that's something that I would need to explore. And because we do not, it's, it would be a very expensive endeavor. I'm not sure the exact cost. I know it's much more reasonable than what it used to be when we did drug testing for athletes. But again, it's one of those things we would have to explore. And I think we would have some support in that area or was indicated before because, just because of the need in the county as well as the region.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Any other questions, Ms. Ed?
And I'm happy to answer any questions, any comments or anything that you have as it relates to CTE and/or anything that we're doing. Because, you know, we want a high-quality program for our kids. We want work-ready students as they leave us. We, and we do have that. I hear from employers, they want our students. They want our welding students. They want our nursing students because they're good employees, because they've had good training. And that's, and again, when I mention one or two, I'm leaving a whole bunch out. So I just have really great CTE teachers. And I mean this from the bottom of my heart. I would put them up against any in the state of Virginia. The programs that we offer are phenomenal. They just, they put their heart and soul in everything that they do. And I, I very much appreciate them.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ed. You're up again.
And I'll just stay if that's okay.
Oh, Dave's got some? Yep. You have the approval of the Supervised Agricultural Experience Credit.
Now, we're talking about high-quality work-based learning. We talked about school-based enterprise, which is what simulated workplace is. And that is one of the high-quality work-based learning opportunities. And we did meet our standard this year because we had some programs that we were able to identify as being simulated workplaces. And we did meet our standard. We're in the yellow this year. But, and that's not the only indicator. There's lots of things that go into that CCRI report. But there's another opportunity that we have in agriculture and I'm very happy to bring this before you. And I'm, I asked Mrs. Wilder to be here with me. You want to come down? Ms. Wilder doesn't like to speak publicly. And she's so good. I don't know why. I don't know why she doesn't want to talk.
Welcome, Ms. Wilder.
So we're very excited. Mrs. Wilder approached me. She has a student who has been exploring some opportunities in the area of agriculture. And you should have a packet, I hope you have a handout that looks like this. Another high-quality work-based learning opportunity is Supervised Agriculture Experience. Supervised Agriculture Experience is embedded into our agriculture class as a daily, as a daily instructional piece. But this takes it to a different level. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to summarize and then I will allow the expert to answer your questions if there may be any. The Immersion SAE, and we do foundational SAE in every class all the time in every student that's enrolled. This is immersion, immersion SAE allows students to build upon their foundational SAE activities by gaining real-world, hands-on experience within their chosen career path. Students will enhance their agriculture industry knowledge, gain financial independence, management skills, and determine whether their career choice aligns with their interests and abilities while supporting their agriculture education coursework. And it is available for grades nine through 12. In order to earn a credit, a high school credit, the students towards graduation, this immersion SAE of at least 280 hours has to be documented for a school year. Now, if you think about that, 280 hours above and beyond what we're doing in the agriculture class. We have a student who has expressed interest in earning the credit. It is an opportunity that the board can approve. We would need board approval for this particular credit. But we would offer our students one credit at graduation each year for 280 hours of documented SAE experience. Mrs. Wilder, did you have anything to add to your question? Good? So?
How many years can they do that? All four or?
They said it had to be locally approved, as one credit.
It said one year. That's what I read in the guidelines. But again, do we have a, is this person trying to get senior?
Senior.
Senior. So it, it gives us an opportunity. It's all for us. And when Mrs. Wilder approached me, I said, well, I'm going to have to learn about it because I'm going to have to teach myself before we can ask the board for it. It says students may earn one additional credit for every school year in which they participate in one or more of the SAEs. So a student, although this student is a senior, and she will only, he or she will only get one credit, there is an opportunity in the future for some additional credits if board approval. As Mrs. Wilder said, this is a local approval. This is not, this is not state mandated. This is a local approval. And I'll be glad to answer any questions and Ms. Wilder will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
So the, the 280 hours, is that all completed on campus? Do they do things off?
No, it doesn't have to be on campus. So example, if a kid has horses or cattle or whatever, they do the same hours. They do the same thing for man today for like a grade. That counts during your time because it can't be, it can't happen during class. It's above beyond class.
And it has to be, and then Mrs. Wilder is very good about.
Well, we, I do my own, but Denise, we got.
Yes.
And it's in the process of being funded and paid. You have the agricultural education tracker. So all your hours, money earned, money spent, everything will go in that. You can turn a report off at the end for every kid.
So who would monitor that? So you make sure those kids did that?
Yeah. Oh, she, she does.
Yes, she would.
She, she does.
The one. The one that is pursuing interest in this, she's one that already helps. And she does a lot of the stuff at the greenhouse. She works with the bees we have at the orchard. So she's already doing it. I just want her to be able to get credit for it.
And, and it can be a paid experience. So we do have, in the summer, we do have a student that helps Mrs. Wilder with the greenhouse because plants still continue to grow after school goes. Mrs. Wilder can't be here every day, every hour, although she is here a lot. But the student helps, can help with that kind of thing. So it could be paid as well. It doesn't have to be free work and we do have that. We've had that the last two years.
I can speak with experience. I don't know if anybody's going to verify and document. Ms. Wilder will probably be the one to do it, so.
I agree. I have no qualms with making sure this is done, documented, and there will be credit awarded, so.
This just gives the school division another opportunity to recognize students and their hard work outside the classroom. We're excited about that opportunity or provide that opportunity.
If there are no other questions, I do need a motion for approval if you want to do that.
Have they got any more questions for Ms. Ed? Or is it Ms. Wilder? Here now, do I have a motion to approve the Supervised Agriculture Experience Credit as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
And our agriculture program is continuing to grow. Mrs. Wilder is teaching four classes currently.
All year.
All year. Because we have that many students that are interested. And we do have a brand-new greenhouse that we are, we're moving forward with. We're sticking to a little time to get it up and get all the water in place. Yes. But we're working towards it. So we're making progress.
Thank you, Ms. Wilder.
We'll see plants in the spring. See, Mrs. Wilder.
Let me ask one question about this program. Does your class ever take a field trip?
I can, let me answer that. Yes.
That's only for the paid internships, right?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Wallace.
I can fix you up on that. Something that they can really learn from.
Yes.
We have, it's called the Henderson Farms. Just above Chattanooga, they farm 2,000 acres. They have 225 Mexicans, legal Mexicans who come in in the early spring to crop picking time. And they have a contract with Walmart. It's a phenomenal operation to go down there and look at that. Everything is graded in the fields. That would be, I can fix you up your kids with that. I might even go with, it's a great farm.
So you have connections that, so Chattanooga?
Just above Chattanooga.
So like what, five hours?
Yep, four and a half, five hours. Hendersons. Look them up on the internet.
Even if, even if it wasn't, I mean, even if it wasn't a whole class, you may have some kids that are truly interested that, that she can go and take in a van or.
And Ms. Wilder is also, if I may add, takes field trips on Saturdays. You know, a lot of times when, you know, it's, it's difficult to get students in and out during the school hours. But she's excellent at that also.
And if you're up here in the afternoon and you want to see a car, you can almost always find her car in the parking lot until late in the afternoon because she has to go out and take care of those things after hours. And she does that with pride. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you all you do, Ms. Wilder.
Thank you.
All right. Our next agenda item is the presentation of the DCSB's Chronic Absenteeum Data. Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you so much. And, and Mr. Ri, Mr. Wallace is coming. Board members, the information, we're not going to go through the entire PowerPoint presentation, parts of that. But you certainly will have the information that you need and I will share that with you. The information I'm about ready to share with you is, is quite concerning when we talk about chronic absenteeism and attendance with our students. And how do we deal with that? First of all, this is not only a Dixon County issue. This is not a Region Seven of, made up of 19 counties. This is a nationwide issue. This is a Virginia issue. Almost every state, and let me take the word almost away, every state has the same issue. And this has come about and has been made worse since COVID. And so what I want to share with you is some data, some information, and then a plan of what we together can do to improve that. And not only to improve student attendance just for the sake of student attendance. And not only to improve student attendance just for the sake of student attendance, but the value of when children attend school on a regular basis, what the outcomes are, not just currently, but for their lifetime. So let me just begin with a couple of, of questions here and, or comments. I found this and I thought, this is great. And it says, "Every journey to success starts with showing up." And I think as you and I and our children look at our lives, every journey to success starts with showing up. You've got to be there. And so one of the things, that is what we as, as a School Division believe. School attendance in school is the number one determinant to a successful student educational experience. It's the number one issue. But it not only influences academic outcomes, but it also plays a significant role in the student's social, emotional, and personal development towards their future success. Ryan, the next slide, please.
Here are some things about chronic absenteeism. It's defined as when a student, chronic absenteeism is defined as a student missing 10% or more of their academic year for any reason, and that includes excused or unexcused absence. That means that during an 180-day school year, a student chronic, is chronic when he or she misses 18 days per year. But we, what we are finding today with our students is that our students are missing 30, 40-plus days of school each year, and these are some of the same students with additional excessive checkouts and tardies. At a glance, we may think, you know what, missing two days of school a month may not seem like much, but when you add a, a child considered chronically absent, frequent absences can impact our child's success in school. So chronic absenteeism affects millions of children, as we have said, nationwide and in Virginia. And with each chronic absenteeism, a child loses out on academic knowledge as well as appropriate opportunities to build essential relationships. The next page, please. Let's look at what the data for Dixon County Schools says, and this is prior data before and after COVID. The student attendance percentage from 2015 to 2016 was 92.05%. You'll look at the following year, 2016, 2017, 91.63%. The next year, 2017, 18, 92.25%. The next year, 218, 219, 93.5%. And then look at 2019, not 2019 and 20, and then it was 93.87%. And then during the 2019 year and thereafter, the impact of COVID. During and after COVID, we've experienced a cultural change regarding student attendance. Let's look at our attendance for 2021, 87.96%. 2122, 88.98%. Student attendance in 2022, 2023, 90.15%. And let me say this, that was the year, and I think Mr. Hicks and I discussed that, that the Virginia Department of Education said, okay, if a child has, has experienced COVID but does work from home, then we can count those schools, those children as present. That's why we see that bump there. And then look at the last year, 23, 24, 88.86%. So again, you see the prior years before COVID, then you see the impact of COVID, and then you see the impact after COVID. The next page, please. And please stop me if you have any questions. If a child is chronic in a school year, he or she is missing, this is one year, over 30 years of math instruction and over 60 hours of reading and writing instruction. By the sixth grade, absenteeism is one of the three signs that we can identify to say this student has the potential of dropping out of school. By the ninth grade, attendance is the greatest, greater predictor that that child will graduate from, than a test, than an eighth grade test score. Starting as early as pre-K and kindergarten, too many absences may cause a child to fall behind and may be a child that may never recover. Even being late for school can lead to poor attendance. Next page, please. Now, this is, this is the information that I want to share with our board and I also have shared it with our administrators. Let's look at what our chronic numbers were for the 22, 23, I'm sorry, 2023, 2024 school year. Hollywood Elementary School with an enrollment of 269 students, they had 78 students miss 18 or more days. That's a 29%. Ridgeview Elementary School with 491 students had 190 students miss 18 or more days, and that was a 46.75%. Ridgeview High School with an enrollment of 400, I'm sorry, 545, had 262 students who missed 18 or more days, and that was a 48.07%. And Ridgeview Middle School had an enrollment of 430 students, and they had 183 students miss 18 or more days, or a 42.46%. This data does not indicate checkouts or tardies, only absences. So please note that excessive checkouts and tardies also impact a child's instruction. Next page, please. So how do we decrease absenteeism and increase student attendance? And this is one of the major goals of our School Division for the 24, 25 school year. We've looked at this in several ways, and what we have found that this is a really simple puzzle with three, only three pieces and one simple message. The first puzzle piece is our parental and family support. We ask our parents and our family to encourage your child to attend school on a regular basis. That's piece number one. The second puzzle piece is our students. We have to educate and show students the importance of regular attendance. And we really have to say, show them, hey, this is what's in it for you. This is what happens when you come to school every day, and this is what happens when you don't. And the third piece is each staff and each school. And the simple message is this, we care about you, our students, when you're not in school, and we ask why, and we ask how we can help. It's important that you be in school every day. We want you to be successful and become good citizens. We can't teach you unless you come to school. You can't learn unless you're here with us. We can't expect you to do as well as your peers if you're not here. And we cannot expect you to miss school often and do as well as your peers. So three simple puzzle pieces, one simple message by all of us. Next, please. I'm not going to cover all of this, but we talk about what parents can do to encourage their child to attend school. And I think the number one for me, of course, all of these are important, creating a positive attitude, communicating the attendance, the importance of attendance. You know, parents and families are children's first teacher. But I think number six is limit absences to genuine illnesses. And this is of course related to COVID. During COVID, if you had the sniffles, if you had, you, you know, we encourage our medical, because of COVID and because of the pandemic, students were encouraged, please stay home. You know, you may come to school and you may infect others. But now after post-COVID, and we can all say, we're after post-COVID, even though we still have cases, what we are asking our parents is this, limit absences to genuine illnesses. Only keep your child at home if she or he is genuinely sick. What does that mean? Running a fever, vomiting, you know your child is sick. While some absences are unavoidable, we know that, and we don't want a sick child at school. It's important not to let minor illnesses, tiredness, or reluctance be the reasons to miss school. All of our schools have excellent nurses that take care of our children. If your child is sick, we will immediately let you know. But I think that's probably been one of those, number six, has been one of the things that we have had the most difficulty with as we deal with parents. If a child has a sniffles, they keep, the child remains home three, four, five days, and then what is happening to the child? Others are be role model. The next page, please. What are the benefits of school attendance? And I think this is where all of us need to be on the message. This is what we need to share with our students and with all of us. Academic achievement. Consistent attendance is directly related to academic performance. Think about the message, the simple message, we can't learn if you're not here. We can't teach you if you're not at school. Regular benefits of school attendance, it builds habits and discipline. It builds peer relationships. Many times, our children feel isolated, and I think during COVID, many of our children felt isolated. They felt alone. They, they did not have that social interaction. And so that's why many of our children are facing anxiety or, or feel anxiousness. We have mental health counselors in our schools, in all of our schools, to help our children. We've had to do that because of the need of our children. It provides skill development, and I think this is an excellent one. It helps students develop critical skills such as teamwork, communication, and problem solving. And children learn this through projects, presentations, and classroom discussion. The long-term impact, I think this is important. Study shows that students who frequently miss school are less, are more likely to drop out, have unemployment, or struggle with career advancement. We were talking just a few minutes about what happens with children or in the workplace or if an employee misses 30, 40, 50 days of school or work, excuse me, what are the chances of that employee remaining employed? Next page, please. Participation in extracurricular activities. Not all of our students are athletes. Not all of our students are, you know, all of the things that we sometimes think about, but many of them are great at music. We've seen that. Many of them are artists. Maybe, maybe many of them are drama students, robotics. There are so many things that many of them are involved in key club and DECA, and we've just seen the agriculture program. There are so many things that our schools can share with our children and that our children can not only participate, but excel in. And the last one, regular school attendance sets the stage for academic success and personal growth. The next page, please. So here's another message. What are the outcomes of not attending school regularly? Again, I'm not going to be going through all of these. I'll let you look at these, but these are the things that our children need to know. These are the things that we need to go, go back to and stress, the academic struggles, the decreased engagement, the social isolation, the increased, increased risk of dropping out, long-term consequences to career and life success, harm to mental and emotional health, and greater risk to be unemployed. One of the things that I found fascinating is that experts have found that school attendance, even in kindergarten, is a predictor for student success. Their attendance in kindergarten. Let's turn the page, please, again. So again, we talked about parents and we talked about students. So what are our schools doing and what are our staff members focused on? We're promoting a safe and welcoming environment for students. We're recognizing student achievement and accomplishments, big or small. We're recognizing good student sense, attendance by promoting incentives and recognizing great attendance. We are providing mental health counselors in each of our schools to help students cope with anxiety and other mental health issues or even just coming to school. I think one thing that sometimes as I talk to parents is this, a child won't come to school if they are, won't learn to come to school if they are at home. We need to help them to come to school and then how to cope with coming to school. Encouraging positive interactions between teachers, students, and families with open houses, family engagement nights, anything that we can get the parents, the school, and the students together. We're addressing attendance issues in pre-K and kindergarten. This is one of our goals for this year, and we're going to be doing that very strenuously to share with our parents, it's important that your child be at school pre-K and in And then promoting teacher and school contact with students and families when students are absent. Again, we care. We're here. Talk to us about what's going on and how can we help you come to school? The other thing about school attendance is checkouts. Many, with, with checkouts and, and tardies, again, going back to what we can do with promoting our students to begin now building those long lifelong lessons that will help them be successful in life. The success of each child counts on all of us working together. One puzzle with three simple pieces. Parents and family is one, students is another, and each staff and school with a simple message to make the picture of successful children. And I know you've heard this before and I, I saw this and I thought, this is maybe the best way to say this, is no matter how we feel, get up, dress up, and then show up. Let's help our children not exclude, exclude themselves from attending school and the possibilities and potential for their life. So as you see... So as you see, we do have an issue. I hope that by the end of this school year, our goal is that we will have reduced our chronic absenteeism. We've increased student attendance before to the pre-COVID numbers. And I like to also say that one of the things that we often hear is when a child misses school, well, they've done their classwork in Google classrooms. I know you may have heard that. When a child makes up their work in Google classrooms, they do not get to participate in the 90 minutes of discussion. They don't get to participate in the 90 minutes of instruction or discussion. They miss out on many of the things that makes school, school. So let me, as we end our presentation, questions from the board or questions or comments? We hope to report to you our successes for the 2425 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is an update on the executive order number 33, self-home-free education. Mrs. Robinson.
Did you say me, sir?
Yes.
This is, Baker does such an excellent job. I have to look through my notes here. The board is aware that in June, Governor Yonkers published executive order 33 regarding cellphone free education. And I am thrilled to report to you that after sharing with principals, discussions with principals and teachers, that the cellphone policy that the board adopted in June seems to be very effective. The student comes in, places a cellphone in the cellphone holder. It remains there during the instructional class. And when the class is over and the bell rings, they pick up their phone and they go on to their next class and put the cellphone there. And that it's being used in all the classrooms. The governor, in a statement that was released last week, has determined that perhaps the cellphone-free policy will extend from before the bell to after the bell, which means that students will not be available, cellphones will not be available to students after the first bell until the end of school. We have not received the final draft on that. We will receive it on September the 16th. When we do, we will bring that information to the board again in September. And at that time, if that is what the direction that the governor is moving with his executive order 33, then we may, at that time, Mr. Hicks and board members may have to adjust our cellphone policy. We will wait until that final draft and then hope to have guidance from this board as to how to move. The new cellphone policy, however it looks, will have to be in place by January the 1st, 2025. But as of now, as of today, I can report to you that the cellphone policy that the board has adopted appears to be working well in our schools. There have been, I'm sure, ups and downs with that. But I think it's been a pleasant way to begin the school year with that. If there are further adjustments to the cellphone policy, then that will be further discussion in later, in future board meetings. So any questions on that? I think I've shared that information with you, just in case you were aware. But that came after, that determination came after the listening sessions that the governor and the Virginia Department of Education had across the state. And that it was from before the bell to after the bell, the cellphone-free education. Any other questions or comments?
Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board members.
Oh, now we get to welcome back Mr. Sedsor. The presentation of communities and schools. Good to see you, Mr. Sedsor. That's okay.
I'd like to thank Mr. Sedsor for waiting. It's always good to see Mr. Sedsor. Sir? Yes. I think you can, I think you can get it out of, can Ryan, can he? You want to use mine? You can take it out of the holder, Ryan. Here. Thank you, Mr. Sedsor.
I thought what I would do this time is, and it's quite interesting, actually quite exciting to me, is I thought we would take a look back at where we started and then where we're at today, starting our fourth year in the division. Back in '21, '22, Dickinson County Public Schools had five schools. Of course, Ridgeview, high school, middle school, Clintwood Elementary, Irvington, and Sandlake Elementary were still in existence. And we had two coordinators. Two community schools, communities in schools coordinators. One coordinator served both Ridgeview High School and Ridgeview Middle School. The other actually spread her time out between the three elementary schools, traveling back and forth each day of the week. That first year, I think we ended up case managing about 60 to 65 students in total. Next slide, Ryan. This is where we're at today. Dickinson County has three schools. We have five full-time coordinators in our buildings. We have one at the high school, two at the middle school, and two at the elementary school. And by the way, Dickinson County is the first division to have two coordinators in a school, along with Norton City, which is also in my region. And by far, it is exponential what they're, what they accomplish when there's two student support coordinators in the building. Also, Dickinson County is the first division to have the Sesame Street in Communities SEL program, social emotional learning. That's represented by the Cookie Monster to the far right. Our coordinators, on a monthly basis, meet with every child in the elementary school and we teach a SEL lesson. Social emotional learning may be, it may involve self-awareness, how to handle your emotions, how to deal with others, how to control your emotions, those type of lessons. Plus, we also engage the family after each lesson. Dickinson County is also the first to have the Second Step Social Emotional Learning Program in the elementary school. And this year, we're going to also implement it in the middle school. The Sesame Street program is for pre-K through second grade and then third and above will experience the Second Step program. Again, we can only do it once a month. I wish we could do it more, but with our caseload numbers, we just can't. It's hard to juggle everything we're trying to do. In addition, the middle school and the elementary school also has an after-school program each through the 21st Century VDO programs. Ms. Portia Fletcher, who is here, and you'll hear, you'll hear from her in a little bit. And I told her not to put as many slides as she did last year, but I think there's only like 1,020 this time. So, but it's really a fun thing she's got going on and the kids truly enjoy it. But with these two programs, they're about $200, or $200,000 each that we spend in these programs each year. We're able to hire 20 part-time instructors. Most of those are school folks. Indirectly, we contract with the school system, which provides six bus drivers. And then through Ms. Compton's programs, indirectly, there's two food service programs that serve these programs. So this is us today. If you look back three years ago, it's, in my opinion, it's quite a bit of growth. In the next couple of days or a week or so from now, we'll also hear if we, we get the after-school program for the high school. And if we do, that'll be three after-school programs running simultaneously for the students of Dickinson County. Okay? Next slide, please, Ryan. What we do is we support students. And we also support schools and we support the staff. These are some of the supports that we offer in the schools. And a lot of these is what Ms. Robinson mentioned just a few minutes ago in her talk about chronic absenteeism. And I'm going to share some of the data from last year and let you see some of the things that took place. Next slide, Ryan. Earlier, I mentioned that first year, we case managed about 60 to 65 students. Last year, we ended the year case managing 313 students in Dickinson County. It's about 15% of your school population. Clintwood Elementary School, 61 students. Ridgeview Elementary, 126. Last year, there was two coordinators in that school. That's why that number is so high. The middle school had 60 and the high school, 66. All of our coordinators met their goals as far as projections. This year, it's going to be a little lower. We're going to lower the projections down to 50. We want them to spend a little more time with those kids than they're able to now with that high of a caseload. So we're going to experiment with that and see what happens. Next slide, Ryan. Every student we case managed had a goal, an attendance goal. 63% of those 313 students made progress towards their goal or they met their goal. Certain students had a social emotional learning goal. 98% of those students who had a social emotional learning goal made progress or met their goal. We do an assessment on all of our case-managed students. If they show in need socially, emotionally, we set a goal and put a program in place for them. That's not the only areas we work with, the children or the students. We have tier one, two, and three supports. Tier one supports are whole school supports. Those supports could be anything from competitions between the classrooms, family engagement events, those type of things. Tier two and three are for case-managed kids only. So I'm going to go through some of the data from last year. If a student needed academic help, we were there to help them. The Appalachian Literacy Project is actually where we gave books to elementary kids. I think four times during the school year, they were able to pick out the books they wanted. They were delivered to the school and they got to take them home and keep them. The biggest part of our work is in attendance, supports, and interventions. You see that number, 68,543. That's the number of students duplicated. That means it's not just one reward or one entry into a contest and you're out. And again, many different competitions, whether it was a classroom. We, I'm really going to push our March Madness competition this year. Kids really tend to enjoy that. And attendance, we did see improvement as far as individual students. But we try, what we're trying to do is change the climate of the schools. I really think if kids have a connection to the school, they'll want to be there. It's not to say they don't, but we're just trying to improve it if we can. Case management is the one-on-one work or the small group work we do with children. Most of that is grouped under the progress monitoring. That's when the coordinators will meet with the students and make adjustments to their support plans. Another large part of our program is parent connection, family engagement. Each month, their coordinators is required to contact the students' families and discuss their child and what they're seeing, progress, or where they need work, if that's the case. The family engagement number's at the bottom. You can see that we did 16 events or were involved with 16 events. 1,441 parents showed up for those events. Some of those events were the after-school events where we were in partnership with them. You see that family engagement took place in the Sesame Street program, the Second Step program. Each month, we would send something home to the parents every time we had a class. If they returned that, they were entered into some type of drawing or some type of reward system for participating in the program. Next slide, Ryan. This social emotional learning column here, that's the actual kids that we served with the Sesame Street program and the Second Step program throughout the school year. Again, we tried to be in the classroom one time per month with every child in the building. Student enrichment, we promoted and did a substance abuse awareness event, Pantanal Awareness Day here at Ridgeview. All middle school and high school students got to participate. Those who had parental permission were also trained on the use of Narcan. And we hope to see that program grow a little bit, maybe this year or first of next year. And then we did some college and career preparation work at the high school. They always have a college and career awareness day where all the kids get to go around to the different booths and visit with the vendors that show up. Next slide, Ryan. Another big part of our program is supplying basic needs to the students. Every year, we do a back-to-school clothing giveaway. We want children to be able to come to school and not worry about the clothes that they're wearing. We want them to be able to focus on school. Instead of that, last year, we served 60 families with back-to-school clothing. We also facilitated and brokered or made sure high school students had the prom dresses they wanted and needed to go to the prom. And then miscellaneous clothing items. A child may come to us during the school year and say, I need a new pair of shoes. Or we noticed they needed a new pair of shoes. We'll take care of that issue for them. And of course, food is always a big issue for a lot of families. I won't go over that. We also keep food in our office. If a child is hungry, they can stop by and get something to eat. And then hygiene products, especially at the elementary school. We do a class over there each year, you know, just to show kids the proper way to use hygiene products like toothpaste and toothbrushes. That's our data from last year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have before I turn it over to Portia for the rest of the night, till about 10 o'clock. Okay. Portia? You know, the worst part of this is holding this microphone.
I'll stay stationary. Okay. And so I'm Portia Fletcher and I work with the after-the-bell program at the elementary and middle school. Ryan, if you can go to the next slide. First, we'll look at the staff impact. You can go to the next slide. So during the 2324 school year, we employed 15 teachers, two high school students who were seniors last year, and three community members part-time. Our program ran Monday through Thursday and we did two and a half hours a day. We had extra hours for these staff members with parent engagement events and field trips. And our field trips are on Saturdays. And so we like being able to offer something for our school day teachers to have a chance to earn some extra money. And they also have fun and the kids are used to them during the day. Ryan, next slide. Okay, let's look at our student and parent impact. This is a breakdown of how many students we have enrolled by grade. So last year, between Ridgeview Elementary and Clintwood Elementary, we had 288 students. And those Clintwood Elementary students were bussed up here in the evening after they just missed. Next slide. This is showing our average daily attendance, kind of a graph over last year or last school year. We have to meet with our grant, an average daily attendance of 50 unduplicated students each week. And if you look at that graph, you can see that we nailed it last year. And towards the end of the school year, we were in the, averaging in the 80s. So we did really good. Next slide. And we had some family engagement events. We had a total of 274 family and community members attend at least one of our family engagement events. Next slide, please. This is for Ridgeview Middle School. You can kind of see where our numbers are by grade level. We had the most in sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then we had a couple that carried over between ninth and 10th grade. And hopefully, if we get that high school grant, you know, we can see ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, those numbers shoot up. Next slide, please. This is a graph that shows the average daily attendance at the middle school. You know, we were in year two at the middle school, and this was a great improvement from the previous year. So this year, we hope to do even better. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of our family engagement events. At the middle school, we had a total of 143 family and community members attend at least one of our family engagement events last year. Next slide, please. Okay, now on to the fun stuff, the student activities. So this is kind of a snapshot of our evening. From 3:15 to 3:35, we have an after-school snack that's provided by the cafeteria. So students are released, and once they get into the routine, they know where to go, where to line up to get the food. 3:35 to 5:35, we have various activities. We have physical activity. Our community partners come in. That's like Virginia Cooperative Extension, behavioral health. We offer enrichment opportunities for our students, Legos, arts, scholastics, DMO stations. We offer SEL. And we also offer, at the elementary school, activities to help students with motor skills. And then, between 5:35 and 5:45, we prepare to load buses and parent pickup. Next slide, please. This is a list of our community partners. We have William King Art Museum. They alternate between the schools every week, and they come and do an art lesson with students. Dickson County Sheriff's Office, Army Corps of Engineers, Virginia Cooperative Extension's Office, Dickson County Behavioral Health, Social Services, Kinship Navigator. And then, we also work with the JAMS program to provide some music education for students. These were some of our field trips that we had last year. We went to Water Theater three times. That's always a favorite of the students and the staff. We went to the Buchanan County Library for an R.L. Stein event. We went to the Hands-On Museum, Birthplace of Country Music, the 4-H Center, Ripley's Aquarium, and Bright Zoo. Next slide, please. These are just a couple of our family engagement events. Each month, or I'm sorry, for each event, we try to have a theme to try to get our families interested in coming. So you can see the various ones we had. The Just Say No music show and the event in December, skating into the holidays, those two were really big events for us, and we had a lot of parents show up for those. Next slide, please. Our summer program. We had a very successful summer program. This year, our theme was Summer Around the World. We did it for two weeks, June 17th through the 27th. And you can kind of look at some of the pictures in the next couple of slides of our students at both sites, having fun with the activities. Ryan, if you can go through the next couple of slides. We ended up having two field trips, Bright Zoo and Ripley's Aquarium. You can see from the kids' faces that they loved it. Next slide, please. We did tada. We did painting. Students painted rocks and made jewelry with air-dry clay. Next slide, please. And then, as you all walk in the middle school building, one of the things that we worked on in the middle school was the landscaping. And you can see there that it was all hands-on deck, and I can attest, and the staff can as well, and the students, that that ground out there was pretty hard to dig through. So it was a feat. And they did this in the hot summer heat and really didn't complain. So we have something beautiful and something to be proud of as we walk in the school building. Next slide, please. I have a couple of program photos if you want to roll through the next couple of slides. These are our community partners that's come in. I'm sorry, that has come in. Next slide, please. And the good thing about these community partners is that everybody who comes in, they're very interactive with the students, so it's a lot of hands-on learning, and the students really like that and engage with them. Those are some snapshots from our Just Say No magic show. And again, this was one that students can engage with. This was another, a couple other family engagements. We had somebody with the Beekeeping Association come in and did a live DMO. We painted pottery. We painted birdhouses. Next slide, please. And one thing that we like to do, we like to create a space for parents to feel welcome and come into the school, so they feel like they are part of their students' education. And again, just like Mr. Sessler said, if those students feel comfortable coming to school, then attendance is going to show that. We did a paint and snack. Here's an Easter craft that we did. Couple of field trip pictures. And I invite you all, if you want to come up in the evenings and check out our program and visit with the kids and see firsthand, you're more than welcome to come up. The smiles on their faces and how excited they are to be there in the evenings is contagious. Our scholastic team there, that bottom left-hand picture, that is the elementary and middle school scholastic team. And last school year, we did a match here, and we invited the families to come and watch. So that was a fun event, and we were able to showcase those students. And hopefully, these students, when they get in high school, will want to participate in the scholastic team. And this last picture is our video E monitor who came last year, who had to go down the slide before he left. So we made sure we took a picture of that. So we look forward to this school year. I'm really, really proud of it. I think we've made a lot of progress, and just like every year, we're getting better and better. More program offerings, figuring out what the students want to do, and we're just looking forward to this school year, and hopefully, we can present to you within the next couple of months and show you even more great and exciting things. Thank you all.
Sorry. The two after-school programs couldn't function without Portia. She does an absolutely wonderful job. She didn't mention it, but these programs also provide childcare for Dickson County for families who don't have it. And all of our programs with communities and schools is free of charge. There's no charge to anybody who wants to come. These family engagement events that we have are open to everybody in the county, everybody in the school system. You don't have to come to the after-school program to attend the family engagement. We just want it to be available for students. Our role is to support them, be available for them, and really, the only thing we require for them to work with us is parental permission. There's no charge to any family who wants to work with communities and schools. If there's no questions, we'll end our part and go home and go to bed. It's late. Unfortunately, they may be digging a hole for me some reason.
They are tremendous and do so much in our schools.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone, all the administration, all the staff, and all the SROs for their real success in terms of schooling. That's a great thing. I really like the program that Ms. Edmond talked about, the CTE, rug testing, simulated workplace protocols, welding, and pottery. I think that it's a future that's going to be a really good program, rug testing, and creates a lot of open doors for our education system and our students as well. I love the agricultural experience created. I think that's one of the futures. And I read a Kipper letter not long ago, that one of the big future things in America, instead of importing food, is going to be the growth of agriculture in this country. So I think that we can do that. We have one farm down at Ridgeview, and that's where we have the farm down, the store down there. There's a guy from Kent, Florida, bought that, and they brought people up to Kent, but one of them's an agriculture teacher from Kent. And he has restaurants down there, so he's raising a type of weed, weed patch down there. So I think agriculture's going to be... And that makes us a diverse school system. I think that's one of the great things. And, you know, with communities and schools, they'll only be able to offer that diversity that we're creating, daycare for our students, and some of them terribly need it. And to me, that just makes a more blessed school system.
Sure. I'll just follow up on what Ms. Trattie said about the public comment section. I thought tonight worked as it should, with most part of everything was handled respectfully and moved to form. And actually, I'd like to see more people show up to the public comment section, as Mr. Higgs alluded to and shone a light on certain subjects and topics. I know our board is aware of a lot of things going on, so things we're not. And I would like to think that we have a, you know, make it a welcoming environment where people will feel free to come and, you know, comment on certain things and share their opinions. And like Ms. Trattie said, there's things we need to work on, and we need to be diligent in that and seek some things through. And I think we are. Second thing is, and I know when Mr. Short and Phyllis Fons, when they speak, they're always thanking us and allowing them to work and do what they do, but we'd like to thank them for all that they do, you know, all the time and effort they put into it. And I know Ms. Mullins mentioned the grant work, and that's much appreciated. And I just think the fact that Mr. Short sat here at the whole meeting tonight shows that he's, you know, he's interested and he's invested in this, and we appreciate him.
Well, I'd say it's been refreshing to hear we got off to a good start. I know that took a tremendous amount of effort from a lot of the folks, our staff, and teachers, and we really appreciate that. And once again, I'm thankful for the folks who came and spoke tonight, you know, as the staff had mentioned, that, you know, our mission statement is to provide a safe and nurturing place for students. And if we fail to do that for one student, we fail our mission. And so, we need to be very vigilant about this. You know, I just ask everyone, you know, all teachers, staff, administrators, let's just be vigilant in this, let's be on the lookout, you know, let's try to support our students the best way we can and to have this thing stop. We go after this with the same vigor, I think, that maybe we have looked at with self-owners, we'll probably have the exact same success, you know. Kids can be cruel, adults can be cruel, and there's really no place for it anywhere, and it's definitely not a place where we'd agree to use steel work on that.
I would like to mention, I had myself distracted earlier on, and I had meant to mention a couple of staff members from our Dickson County Public Schools. Tracy Deal, 41 years, for the system in Kent Rose, who's a teacher at Hurford High School that they post, recently passed away. And I know we've already had one moment, so I'll just take a moment to just think about those folks for a second before we go into closed session. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. So this time, we'll go into closed session. Closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, Code of Virginia. There will be a closed session with the purpose of, one, employment issues related to discussion or consideration of specific individuals, unemployed, as attendance coordinator, part-time teachers, A and substitutes, and resignations pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A. And two, consult legal counsel regarding the investment of public funds associated with school construction and consolidation regarding actual or probable litigation, along with consultation regarding specific matters requiring legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-1A678 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Yes.
Motion, we have a second.
Yes.
And a second. All those in the place, please in the capes say aye. Aye. If you need one. We are now closed session.
To come out of closed session.
To come out of closed session.
A second.
Oh, me.
Is there a second?
Any discussion.
Any discussion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
We are now out of closed session.
We are now out of closed session. Mr. Robinson, will you please read the certification papers?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Dickson County Public Schools has convened a closed session on this pursuant, on this day pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dixon County School Board hereby certifies so that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered. Would you please certify?
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
The motion is coming for closed session.
Are there any motions coming for closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve employment recommendations as presented in closed session.
Go ahead, go ahead here, second. Any discussion?
Any discussion.
Mr. Chair, just as a matter of clarification, as I understand that Mr. Vanover's sister-in-law was put on the list by the vision superintendent of the Division of Teachers' Aid. Either way, we need Mr. Vanover certified that he had no involvement in our decision.
I certify.
And following up on that, we also need the vision superintendent certified that the decision was based upon merit of fit candidate or that no member of the board had any involvement in our decision.
I certify. I certify.
Are there any further discussion?
Are there any further discussion?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Proving the personnel as presented?
Proving the personnel as presented? Please say aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Do we have any other business to discuss?
Do we have any other business to discuss?
Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Begging. Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Oh, up and going.